It's much too quiet in here. Fuck the most.
There's a cop.
I mean, we're right here and then there's another gentleman out in the hall.
Peter's sitting upstairs.
We're only going to be here for the first six minutes. That's why we're standing.
You want more? Get a couple more chairs. We'll know where they all go at the end.
In the office.
We'll find them tomorrow.
Here, we'll put Peter right in the front row.
Wow. That's lucky. Except for when I have the team come up and stand and then you have to push the chairs back.
That's the Dutch chair.
Geez. Rough crowd here, Peter.
No HR complaints.
Nothing back? Nothing back?
Nothing back. I'm sure she's coming. She's got like 60 seconds. You probably can't find a parking spot.
It could be.
Put on some music.
Yeah, or you could sing.
Sing.
They'll be fighting. They'll be fighting to get up.
We're just going to wait one minute to see if Counselor Lovewell gets here. Bear with us. Keep talking amongst yourselves.
Ask you a budget question.
This show.
There's always something like that.
You can do the whole part. The whole thing. Yeah, that's fine.
Not doing it. It's okay. We're all talking amongst ourselves. It's fine. How are you?
Okay, everyone got their mics on?
Mics on? Mics on? Mics on? Turn them on. Whole house. Love it. I know, this is great. Okay. I would like to call the Monday, March 10th, 2025 council meeting to order. Roll call. Counselor Watson is absent. All other counselors are present. Counselor Smith, would you like to do the invocation?
Yeah, my pleasure. If everybody would please join me in being the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment and making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen. All right, next is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest for the counselors. Is there any counselor who has a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none, we will move on. Item number six is public forum. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak this evening? A lot of the public here, which is exciting. Danielle, did anyone send anything in?
No.
Okay. Wonderful. So then we get to get to the fun things next. So item number seven is under bid openings, awards, and appointments, and we've got a lot of awards to take care of tonight. So tonight, we are going to be recognizing some athletes and coaches from Caribou High School, which is really, really exciting for us here on the council. So I do have something I'd like to read. The Caribou City Council acknowledges the dedication, hard work, and the positive impact that each one of our student athletes has on our community. From those who participate in Little League and the programs offered at the Caribou Parks and Recreation Department, to those who play varsity sports as champion Caribou Vikings, we commend your strength and resilience. Caribou student athletes embody the spirit of teamwork, perseverance, sportsmanship, and their efforts are a source of inspiration for their peers and their community. We would also like to take this opportunity to commend the parents and family members who play a vital role in shaping their character, values, and supporting their academic and athletic success. Working alongside your student athletes, you celebrate their victories and offer support during challenging times. You help them to balance their commitments and achieve their goals. The Caribou City Council recognizes that coaches are more than just instructors. They are mentors, role models, and motivators who guide and support student athletes on their journey. Their expertise, empathy, and unwavering support are instrumental in shaping not only athletes but also our future citizens. The achievements of student athletes and the dedication of coaches impact positively on our community by fostering a sense of pride, unity, and sportsmanship. Their presence on and off the court creates a positive environment for everyone. Therefore, tonight, the Caribou City Council would like to honor some special student athletes and coaches from Caribou High School. By recognizing and celebrating the achievements of student athletes and coaches, the Caribou City Council hopes to inspire future generations to pursue their dreams, embrace challenges, and contribute positively to our community. So, we are going to have a photo, a photo op here in just a minute. I'm going to come up and I have some certificates for people. So bear with me. I'm going to get out of the way. All right, so the first student athlete we would like to recognize tonight is Grace Jean. Grace is the 2025 Maine State Girls Wrestling Champion, and we're really excited to have you here, and this is such an honor for our community that you're here representing us. So congratulations. And is Coach Ryan here this evening?
Yes.
Oh, Coach Ryan, we even have something for you, too. Hi, there. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
Okay, so do you want to like move so you can get the whole?
Let's, yep, let's scoot this way. There, and then everyone can, I don't know if the council, do you want to stand up? Stand and sprint.
Stand so they, Paula can hit a nice picture. Ready, everyone? Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, hold on. Manager Thompson needs her turn.
I can't see you cast our level.
I'm short.
Okay, everybody say cheese.
We said it in our heads. Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. Thank you.
Could I speak? Do I have to speak in the mic? Can I just?
You can speak wherever you like.
I just wanted to.
And if you want to stand this way so that people at home can see, you can do that, too.
Grace did finish sixth place at the New England Championship this past weekend in Rhode Island, so it's been a whirlwind for her. So then she represented Caribou. And she was treated on Wednesday before we left, before she was heading out Thursday. So she was treated to a walk-through around the school, and people got to cheer for her, and she had her some medals, and they won a sword at one event, so she carried that through the halls at Caribou High School, and it was completely safe.
I'm glad you put that disclaimer in there. That's wonderful. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize the Caribou Vikings Girls Basketball Team. So, girls, why don't you come on up?
Yes.
So we are very proud that the girls are the Class B state champions this year, so it's very exciting. And Coach Brown, if you want to come on up as well. That's so cute. Okay, what I'm going to do is just call you each up so that I can give you your certificate, and then we'll get a photo. Amelia Godin. Congratulations, Amelia. Lily Bell. Okay, right next to me. Brianna Lebec. Lilly McFrossen. Evelyn Roy. Liv Adams. Oh, you only need one, right? Ainsley. Ainsley Karen. Congratulations. And Madeline Depre. Quinn Corrigan. Jocelyn Griffith. Kayden's Harrison. Oh, and Gwen Anderson. Madison Denzlow. Bryn Hamilton. And Coach Kayla Brown. And we do have certificates for Coach Savage and Coach Turner, so can I give those to you? All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay, ladies, let's crowd in over here. I know, where's the ball? I don't know if I can, I don't know if I can take this picture without the ball. I'll pretend I'm holding it. That's a good idea. All right. It's okay, Paula, are we fitting in?
How are we going to stand?
Counsel! Please rise! You're going to be easily. Oh, thank goodness. Right here? You sound good, lady. Sorry, Dan. You're really nice. I am. I'm blunt, but I'm kind about it. I love you. I love you.
Okay, ready, everyone? Here we go. Nice.
Thank you. Oh, Penny, oh, wait, no. Freeze! Everyone, freeze! Stay in the same spot. There we go.
See everybody's beautiful face. And whatever other face. Yep, I can see everybody's beautiful. Okay.
Thank you. Again, congratulations, ladies!
So again, just a few more things. I would like to thank, you know, the city of Caribou for your support, and it's, when these things happen, it starts at the rec. These kids are, as little kids, are through the rec programs, and it's those little investments of the older high school kids helping out as these kids have with the rec program. So it starts there, through the school programs, and we can't do it without your support. So thank you, guys, for that. You know, coming back into town after both the championship events, getting the parade, the parades out of town, you know, it's the PD and the fire department for stepping up. It's like, you call, or some parents called, and it was like, yep, we're there. So, you know, working with the city, it's great to have that relationship, and we can't thank you, guys, enough for your support. So thank you. The other thing that we would like to mention tonight, again, due to teamwork and all these pieces, it takes a village to raise a child, we also had on Friday evening, a very wonderful thing happen. Maddie Depre earned Miss Maine Basketball, so.
We actually have something for her, too.
So, and again, that's one of those things, I was talking to a reporter the other day, and he asked me about it, and I rambled on for five minutes about, we need respect in the North, and, you know, Maddie's certainly worthy of it, she's had a great career, great coaches, great teammates, and I wanted to continue, and I had to stop myself. I was just like, I think you've heard my rant, so sure enough, she was able to get it, so makes it even better, just, you know, a great, great ending to a great career and a great, again, team, team thing when we think about everything that's happened. So, again, thank you, guys, for your support.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we do have a couple of more awards to give out, and Counselor Terrio is going to help me by reading off a couple of things, because she's got it right back there.
The Big East Basketball Conference voting for 2025 was done by the coaches and athletic directors of the Big East schools. Caribou cleaned up with several big awards, including Madeline Depre on first team, Liv Adams on second team, Quinn Corrigan on third team, and Ainsley Karen as an honorable mention. Additionally, Madeline Depre was named the Player of the Year. Each school recognized special awards, and Senior Amelia Godin was recognized as the Scholar-Athlete, Jocelyn Griffith was recognized as the Paul Soucy Spirit Award, and Senior Ainsley Karen was recognized as a Defensive Player from Caribou High School. Tonight, the Caribou City Council would like to recognize that Caribou head coach Kayla Brown was named Co-Coach of the Year. Congratulations to Coach Brown and to everyone recognized by the Big East Basketball Conference.
One up, Coach Brown. Congratulations.
Appreciate that.
Congratulations to all of you. That's such a great accomplishment.
Okay, I just want to say, oh.
Oh, more pictures! They never? Wait, we better come this way. It's going to look funny. There we go. That's good. That's good for a short one in the back.
Okay, everybody, oh, gentlemen, go that way. Okay, Coach Brown. I'd like to thank you, guys, too, real quick, and I know what Mr. Graves said, thank you for recognizing the importance of athletics. I really like what you said at the beginning about the lessons learned. I think the girls learned a lot of lessons throughout the season. I did, and so have we did as coaches as well. And if you watched the game, that state game, you saw one of the most important ones, never really been played until the last minute, and that just, I think, is a good cap to our season and a good emphasis on that lesson as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Terrio, take it away.
In addition to Madeline Depre being a Maine Class B Girls Basketball state title holder, she was named the Big East Girls Basketball Player of the Year. Senior Madison Depre has received many awards this basketball season, and each is much deserved. Tonight, the Caribou City Council would like to recognize that Madeline Depre is the first Caribou High School basketball player to be named Miss Maine Basketball. This honor was given to the Maine Association of Basketball Coaches McDonald's All-Star Weekend Banquet on Friday, March 7th. Congratulations on all your future endeavors.
We made her bring her trophy.
Oh, nice! Okay, we don't have the gold ball, but this is just as awesome. That's very awesome. Congratulations. Here, come right over this way. There we go. Here, I'll help, do I want to help? I want to feel useful.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Penny, do you want to get one? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And we did save one more award for, for the end.
Caribou High School Principal Jamie Selfridge has been named the Main Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. This is the first time in more than 30 years that an Arusta County principal has received this honor. This is a process which involves an application, interview, and a school visit. Principal Selfridge has been the Caribou High School principal since 2022, and we thank her for the work she puts in for the students and staff at CHS. Tonight, the Caribou City Council would like to recognize that Caribou High School Principal Jamie Selfridge has been named the Main Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Congratulations on this very deserved honor.
We snuck that one in on. You see that? We do.
Thanks.
Oh, oh. Manager Thompson will not be satisfied without that.
Okay, can I get one with the whole?
Rise!
No gaveling me down today. Okay, that's good. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. This was really special for us.
Excellent. Thank you, I'm very lucky.
You gave us a heart attack.
That was good stuff, right?
That was the good stuff.
That was a good stuff.
It was a fun stuff. They don't want to stay for the budget meeting.
We got somewhere to be.
Very important.
I didn't understand that at all.
I know. Did they forget these ones? Were these ones supposed to go with them? Oh, yeah, I'll, yeah, we'll get them. Let me get them, too. I don't know if this one was yours, too. Nope. Thank you. Okay. Well, we went from the very fun part of the meeting to the not-so-fun part. Okay. So item number eight is public hearings and possible action items, and our big discussion tonight is the budget. So we will be having a public hearing on the 2025 Municipal Income, Capital, and Expense Budgets, and I believe this starts on page three of your packet. Okay. Penny, before we open the public hearing, did you want to talk a little bit about it?
Sure. So the budget process is divided in our city charter into three processes: expense, capital expense, and income. On or before the third Monday in March, the city council will hold a public hearing and vote on the city's final detailed expense budget for the ensuing year. So where are we now? All department budgets have been presented, and tonight is the public hearing on the 2025 municipal budget. So based on the initial numbers, the general fund expense budget is $12,514,121. This does not include the enterprise accounts. The committee recommended capital, which you can change that, it hasn't been accepted, but for the purposes of this illustration, that's what I used, $1,092,797. The general fund revenue budget, which is referred to in our charter as income budget, the revenue budget is $11,523,760, and again, this does not include the enterprise accounts. So the way we have things set up, when you have lapsed appropriations from one year, you use them in, not the next year, but the year after, so we've had time for the audit. So the lapsed appropriations from 2023 were $565,944, and the appropriation allowance from 2024, which was an amount that the city council voted to move from the 2024 budget to help offset the 2025 budget, was $310,000. With the projected revenues and reserved funds that I just mentioned, if, when those are subtracted from the expense and capital requests, there is a projected $1,207,214 shortfall. So this would be an additional amount to be raised through property tax, which could amount to over a 2.5 mil increase. So for reference, the 2024 mil rate was 21.24. So in your packet, the expense budget is on pages five through 55. Capital is on pages 56 to 61, and the income or revenue is on pages 62 to 79.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:23 PM. At this point, does anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and open the discussion up to members of the council.
Yes, the appropriation allowance from '24 was 310. There was some additional money that we did not have to appropriate on. That will now be available for two more years.
That will be available in 2026. Those would be the lapsed appropriations from '24 will be available in '26, after we've had our audit for '25, in '25 for 2024.
But the three, we voted on the 310.
You voted on the 310.
And then whatever, whatever the remaining balance was.
Goes to '26.
And that, that'll be, we'll get a line item on that in there somewhere.
Other questions or comments? It's going to be a very quick public hearing.
Jocelyn Griffith was recognized as the Paul Soucy Spirit Award. And Senior Ainsley Kirin was recognized as a Defensive Player from Kiribou High School. Tonight, the Kiribou City Council would like to recognize that Kiribou Head Coach Kayla Brown was named Co-Coach of the Year. Congratulations to Coach Brown and to everyone recognized by the Big East Basketball Conference.
One up, Coach Brown.
Congratulations.
Appreciate that.
Congratulations to all of you. That's such a great accomplishment.
Okay, I just want to say, oh.
Oh, more pictures. They never. Wait, we better come this way. It's gonna look funny. There we go.
Okay.
That's good for a short one in the back.
Okay, everybody, oh, Joe, can you do that one?
Okay.
I'd like to thank you guys too, real quick, and I know what Mr. Graves said. Thank you for recognizing the importance of athletics. I really like what you said at the beginning about the lessons learned. I think the girls learned a lot of lessons throughout the season. I did it myself. We did as coaches as well. And if you watched the game, that state game, you saw one of the most important ones. Never really got them playing until the last minute. And that just, I think, is a good cap to our season and a good emphasis on that lesson as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Terry, I'll take it away.
In addition to Madeline Dupree being a Main Class B Girls Basketball State Title Holder, she was named the Big East Girls Basketball Player of the Year. Senior Madison Dupree has received many awards this basketball season, and each is much deserved. Tonight, the Kiribou City Council would like to recognize that Madeline Dupree is the first Kiribou High School Basketball Player to be named Miss Main Basketball. This honor was given to the Maine Association of Basketball Coaches McDonald's All-Star Weekend Banquet on Friday, March 7th. Congratulations on all your future endeavors.
We made her bring her trophy.
Oh, nice. Hey, we don't have the gold ball, but this is just as awesome.
That's very awesome.
Congratulations. Here, come right over this way. There we go. Here, I'll help. Do I want to help? I want to feel useful.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you. Penny, do you want to get one? Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And we did save one more award for, for the end.
Kiribou High School Principal Jamie Selfridge has been named the Main Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. This is the first time in more than 30 years that an Arusta County Principal has received this honor. This is a process which involves an application, interview, and a school visit. Principal Selfridge has been the Kiribou High School Principal since 2022, and we thank her for the work she puts in for the students and staff at CHS. Tonight, the Kiribou City Council would like to recognize that Kiribou High School Principal, Jamie Selfridge, has been named the Main Principal of the Year by the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Congratulations on this very deserved honor.
We snuck that one in on. You see that? We do.
Thanks. Whoa, 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 whoa.
Oh, oh. Manager Thompson will not be satisfied without that.
Okay, can I get one with the whole panel?
Okay. Rise.
No gaveling me down today. Okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you all for being here this evening. This was really special for us.
Gave us a heart attack.
That was good stuff, right?
That was the good stuff.
They don't want to stay for the budget meeting.
Sorry, we have somewhere to be. Somewhere very important.
I don't understand that at all.
I know. Did they forget these ones? Were these ones supposed to go with them? Oh, yeah, I'll, yeah, we'll get them to them. Let me get them to you. I don't know if this one was yours too. Nope. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we went from the very fun part of the meeting to the not-so-fun part. Okay. So, item number eight is Public Hearings Impossible Action Items, and our big discussion tonight is the budget. So, we will be having a public hearing on the 2025 Municipal Income, Capital, and Expense Budgets. And I believe this starts on page three of your packet. Okay. Penny, before we open the public hearing, did you want to talk a little bit about it?
Um, sure. So, the budget process is divided in our city charter into three processes: Expense, Capital Expense, and Income. On or before the third Monday in March, the City Council will hold a public hearing and vote on the city's final detailed expense budget for the ensuing year. So, where are we now? All department budgets have been presented, and tonight is the public hearing on the 2025 Municipal Budget. So, based on the initial numbers, the general fund expense budget is $12,514,121. This does not include the enterprise accounts. The committee recommended capital, which you can change that. It hasn't been accepted, but for the purposes of this illustration, that's what I used. The general fund revenue budget, which is referred to in our charter as income budget. The revenue budget is $11,523,760. And again, this does not include the enterprise accounts. So, the way we have things set up, when you have lapsed appropriations from one year, you use them in, not the next year, but the year after. So, we've had time for the audit. So, the lapsed appropriations from 2023 were $565,944. And the appropriation allowance from 2024, which was an amount that the City Council voted to move from the 2024 budget to help offset the 2025 budget, was $310,000. With the projected revenues and reserved funds that I just mentioned, if, when those are subtracted from the expense and capital requests, there is a projected $1,207,214 shortfall. So, this would be an additional amount to be raised through property tax, which could amount to over a 2.5 mil increase. So, for reference, the 2024 mil rate was 21.24. So, in your packet, the expense budget is on pages five through 55. Capital is on pages 56 to 61, and the income or revenue is on pages 62 to 79.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:23 PM. At this point, does anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and open the discussion up to members of the council.
Yes, the appropriation allowance from '24 was $310. There was some additional money that we did not have to appropriate on. That will now be available for two more years.
That will be available in 2026. Those would be the lapsed appropriations from '24 will be available in '26, after we've had our audit for '25, in '25 for 2024.
But the three, we voted on the 310.
You voted on the 310.
And then whatever, whatever the remaining balance was.
Goes to '26.
And that, that'll be, we'll get a line item on that in there somewhere.
Other questions or comments? It's going to be a very quick public hearing. Most of your department heads are here too, so if you have questions for them or if you want them to speak about something in their budget, there's certainly one here to talk to you about.
I, I would maybe want to hear from the fire department. I know that they cut a lot of yours. Or they recommended to cut a lot of your budget. Was there any last thoughts that you want to? Do you want to come up and say anything else about that before the final vote is made tonight? I know that there's.
Well, we're going to vote next week.
Yeah. Oh, okay, we're not making the final vote tonight.
Not tonight.
Before the final vote is made, Ben. Because I, I know that probably yours, yours had some of the larger cuts, and there was a lot of money being requested there too. And I'm not saying that one side versus another side was right or wrong. I just wanted to hear if there's anything in there that you need to say, hey, we really, really need this, and that was being cut.
Do you want to go to the microphone so people at home can hear?
This is for capital. I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that on.
Yep, so, in capital, there was some suggestions made on things that weren't presumed to be in capital, so I took those out by the recommendation in the council, but had to place those back into my expense budget as were, that was requested. So, in theory, my capital went down, but my expense budget went up, so.
But those were probably kind of granted by putting them into the expense? I would assume they were put into the expense and not challenged at all on that, or were they? Is that correct?
I'd assume they haven't been yet.
Nothing has been yet.
They haven't been yet. So, so, I mean, that was good news. I'm just saying, for, for you, that was good news, right? Okay.
Right.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. Gotcha. Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off. Just, just to, so I'm following.
So, with what I took out of capital and put into my expense budget, that increased my expense budget by $32,400. I did notice one item that I did put into my expense budget was still included in the capital, so I didn't know if somebody, or we had changed our mind on something, but it was the item number 12, which was the $8,800 for the replacement of the batteries for our hydraulic rescue equipment. So, there's a, it's in both, actually, so I guess whichever way we go with that.
I see.
Oh, yeah.
What item was that?
Number 12, the batteries for the rescue equipment.
Number 12.
Mine doesn't say.
No.
Mine doesn't say batteries. Yeah, well, it says number 12, $8,800 for replacement batteries. This is on page 57.
Oh, it's on the other list. Page 57.
Oh, I got you. We're looking at different pages.
Yeah.
So, that's in both.
So, it's in both, so we just need to remove it from capital and leave it in the expense, probably? Is that correct?
I would say so.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the life, what's the life of the batteries?
This is a one-time purchase.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we put it in the expense, it would be, that would work well.
Yeah, we can definitely take that.
I ended up putting it under my, I put new equipment, basically, what I put it under.
I think it was, we recommended approving it. We just got to get it over to the expense side.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Not really. My numbers are kind of where, where I'm at. With everything else, I mean, just the increase in a lot of items that we carry, just EMS supplies alone is quite a burden on our expense budget. But we need that, those items in order to operate and do our job, so.
Gotcha. Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Would departments wish to speak? Vote anything?
Anybody want a helicopter, or? No? Okay.
I'd like a helicopter.
We'll get up there.
Okay, are there any recommendations from the council?
I just want to say I appreciate that the committee did such, I mean, I feel like they did a lot of work to, to try to be fair. When I looked back at that, I thought that it was fair, and tried to find ways to fit things in that were really important and, and make some plans for the future too on some of these things, but without just cutting everything. And I know that it's hard. It's a tough year, so I just wanted to commend that.
Regarding the capital?
Yep, regarding capital.
I, I can weigh in on that one more time. I don't, it looks like we're being harsh here on some things. Our departments aren't getting to get what they need and the equipment they need. You know, that's why we can talk about that ladder truck. And when it, when it is due for replacement, we will have to buy it. And we just have to fund it at that time. Whether we lease or we use another option. So, I just don't want this to look like we're being mean here. We're just trying to keep everything.
No, I can see it. We're just looking through it.
So, when it comes to time, if we do need a replacement for any of this stuff, that I'm sure, I'm sure that it'll be replaced. Or I assume the council would want to replace that, so. What do I say about that?
Okay. Anything further? Okay. Closing the public hearing at 6:30. Okay, and it looks like we do have, we're going to revisit this under item 10 briefly. I mean, it's kind of the same information, so, but.
But it's unfinished business.
Sure. Okay, and number nine is our reports by staff and committees, and we have our city managers' report up next.
So, in tonight's city managers' report, I would like to highlight a few exciting achievements, which we've already done tonight, too. Congratulations are in order to our Deputy Treasurer, Holly Duty, for her recertification by the Maine Municipal Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association as a Certified Treasurer. Holly wears many hats in the city of Kiribou. In addition to working as the Deputy Treasurer, Holly is responsible for payroll, accounts payable, and accounts receivable. So, we want to congratulate her on her recertification. Thought I had another thing in here, but I decided. Congratulations also to our Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, Gary Markey. On Thursday, March 13th, Superintendent Markey will receive the Central Arustic Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award. The Chamber's Citizen of the Year Award recognizes a special individual who has made notable contributions and successes in our communities and shows dedication and spirit beyond what is considered regular duty. Also, at the Central Arustic Chamber of Commerce Dinner and Awards Banquet, Kiribou Business, Bowyer's Garage, and Body Shop will be honored as the Business of the Year for Community Impact. The business was started in 1941 by Peter Bowyer and has remained a family business with a mission to give back to the community by assisting local churches and civic organizations. For 35 years, they have offered rides on New Year's Eve to reduce automobile accidents. I would also like to commend the staff of the Kiribou Public Works, Kiribou Police, and Kiribou Fire and Ambulance Departments for their service to our community during the many winter storms our city has experienced. While nonessential staff like me can go home early and wait out the storm, the dedicated staff of our essential services work to keep the roads open and are on standby for any emergencies.
Absolutely. Thank you, Penny.
Dave, do you know how much snow we've got so far this year? I'm putting it on the spot, but I didn't. I was thinking of it, I was thinking of it earlier today, and I'm like, I got to text him and see if he knows.
We're at about 90 inches, which is about four inches less than our normal. Our entire season last year, we got 88 inches. Our entire crew is tired. It's not so much the snow, just so everyone knows. It's the wind that creates the worst weather. I mean, typical eight-inch storm that took eight to 10 hours to come down, you can be plowed in about four hours more than the length of the storm. But it's the next two days, just trying to keep roads clear. It's the next two weeks to wipe it back out to car wash. Last year, we were fortunate, low amount of snow, and it really wasn't a windy season. This year here, we really paid, and I think it's our own fault. We talked about how easy it was going to be and how much potential savings there could be, and then we got hit, so.
Well, you've got all of it in a short amount of time, too.
Yeah, the last five weeks has been pretty rough. But we'll get there.
Almost there. See the other side of the tunnel.
Oh, yeah. I can see the light.
Okay. Manager Thompson, did you have anything else you wanted to share? Okay, thank you.
It was fun to see everybody here, all the young people here tonight.
It really was.
Anyway, we're going to have another group.
Yeah, we're going to have another group next Monday, so.
That's right, too.
Stay tuned. We have the boys here next week.
Perfect.
Okay, item number 10 is unfinished business, and it's, again, the discussion of the 2025 Municipal Budget, which we will be voting on at next Monday's meeting. As Manager Thompson mentioned earlier, we are looking right now at about a $1.2 million shortfall. So, you know, that could amount in a, in a 2.5 mil increase. So, I know no one seemed to have a whole lot of feedback at this point. I think maybe we could just take some time to look it over and maybe provide Manager Thompson with any suggestions we might have between now and then so that she can have something prepared for Monday. Does anyone have any thoughts that maybe something that just?
I have, I have a question that actually probably doesn't even pertain to this, but I do have a question about the enterprise accounts, because I know that, that doesn't directly go into our budget, but should, and I don't want to keep coming back to this, but should things in the political climate stay that the way that they are? Do we ever fall on the hook for those at all for enterprise accounts? Or do they always stay, you know, fully funded by federal government grants? I mean, how does that work?
So, Lisa, did you want to talk, would you want to go and talk about housing and FSS? So, our, our two largest ones really are, that we rely on federal funding, is for housing and FSS. And at the last meeting, the council asked me to connect with our department heads to see how it would be, how the city would be impacted if these federal funds stopped coming.
Yep.
And, you know, the biggest one for the federal grants is Lisa's, so she will talk to you about that.
As of today, the only thing I think that we do know in the housing side, the money is there. It's coming in month by month. As far as Department 24 goes, which is the Section 8 side, we have been getting our monthly allocation bud, budgets from HUD, so we can disabsorce the monthly HAP, monthly rent checks of the landlords. As far as administration fees, that's where our money comes from for the run-of-the-office supplies, salaries, things like that. That is coming in. Right now, we do have our budget roughly until the end of March. I got a couple more notices today for April, so things are looking good. Unfortunately, HUD doesn't give me for the full 12 months. They go like two or three months at a time. In fact, the other day, I got a couple of extra month, a little bit more money for last year, January and February. So, they're kind of a little bit behind, but that's the way it's always been as long as I have been here. As far as Department 96, there is light at the end of the tunnel, as Dave would say. We got our funding grant. We were allocated that last year from HUD. I did get the notice last week from HUD to go accept it. Right now, I'm just waiting for the government to put it into the system so I can start downloading it. What's going to happen next year with that grant? I don't know. There is rumors, I've heard, that they may not do the grants again. If that does, that happens, unfortunately, I won't be able to have that employee. But we will continue the FSS program. We don't need to have the coordinator for that particular program. So, like the rest of the other housing authorities in the state, we're playing it month by month, day by day, but things are looking hopeful.
So, just to, to kind of follow up on that. Like the school budget, should we approve your budget and then somehow, in May, the federal government stop funding your program? Or is the city on the hook? Do we need to, to make up for the difference? Or that's, that's really my question. Is it going to be the same situation as it would be? Just because that's going to, I mean, we have to keep that in mind, too, when we're, when we're considering.
When you approve a budget, you can spend less than that. So, what would happen is we would have to discontinue that program. And as I said before, we do keep an amount of money in reserve so that, because there's, there's, even if they stop paying, there's going to be a period of time that Lisa's going to have to work with her landlords and the participants in the program. We don't know what that would even look like, I guess, at this point, but, but there's going to be a period of time for that.
Well, hopefully, we never have to know. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking the questions to know.
But the council could discontinue the program, because you can spend less. It's not like, so with the RSU, if their budget passes, we're going to have to pay that, because they just hand us a bill. You, as the council, have no agency over that bill.
That's correct.
If the taxpayers approve it, you have to pay it, period. Same with the county. They approve it, you pay it.
This is a little different than that.
This is different, because you have agency over Lisa's budget for housing and FSS. And one thing that doesn't show up on here, and I'm going to put Lisa on the spot again, doesn't show up here under housing. Like what, what we have in here is kind of the administration side, but how much money are you putting into the community every month with rents? I mean, probably we can look at it near the floor.
I'm going to guess right off the top of my head, probably, I'm going to say for March, this is tenant and numbers, I'm going to say close to $100,000 between the four voucher programs that we're running.
Because it's over a million dollars that, the HAP payments that Lisa's talking about, when those go to landlords in the community on the behalf of her participants.
Correct. It's not only including that, but it's also caught utility reimbursements for some families. They just don't have enough income to pay that electric bill, but they qualify for that utility reimbursement. We're also getting landlord incentives, helping the families pay the security deposit, damage reimbursements, because things happen. When they, someone's been living in that apartment for 20 years, and unfortunately, they pass away, and now the landlord's got to go in and re-sheetbook or new carpeting. And that's also including money for the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. Part of the HAP budget, Housing Assistance Payment Budget, the money comes from that to put into the family's escrow account, even though it's not technically rent, but that's where that money comes from. And if I remember correctly, I think it's the month of, maybe January, February, I can't remember which one, we had one family graduate close to $17,000. So, that money is going back out to that community. And that person, person went off the program. They were a graduate. They did what the program was designed to do.
So, for the, for the month of March, it looks like.
February, I think it is.
Yeah, February was 100 and, well, this is from 2024, was 112,000. So, I mean, just looking at, I, I went back to look at the reports in the back, so. So, it's a lot of money that's going into the community that's guaranteed for these landlords and helps to keep their participants also paying their share of the rent. Also, because they know if they don't pay their share, the Kiribou Housing Authority isn't going to pay their share either.
And we have a lot of landlords. In fact, I had two today contact me. They've got several openings. They want to know what we have for voucher people that are on the street that are looking. I mean, we've got landlords that come right to us. So, it's not like the families are going out and searching really hard. So, I look at that as a great compliment.
I think so, too. You guys do a good, a good job, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I'm only hoping for good things. I just wanted to clarify for the budget part.
I'm trying to stay on top of it.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you.
Or trying to stay on top of it the best I can.
I mean, Lisa and I check in regularly about everything that's going on with her department, so you would know if there was something kind of going off the rails.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, so we're looking at, only on the city side, at 1.2 million.
1.2 million, yeah. Which would be like 2.5 mil.
I'm looking here. We get the lapse appropriation of 5.65. We get our appropriation allowance of 3.10. And if I remember correctly, we're around 192, 196 in the Property Tax Relief Fund.
Yep, yep.
If those apply to that, that would only leave us a shortfall of approximately, I don't want to be a profit of $100,000.
Did you factor those in?
These are taken out already. So, so when we take the revenue and we take these lapse appropriations and your appropriation allowance, it's 1.2. So, if you take out that 192 that we have, then, then you're still over a million.
So, that's already been factored in, though.
It's already been factored in.
Okay. So, we're still, we're still a million dollar shortfall.
You're still a million dollars.
And that's.
And that's based on the suggested capital expense, not on the other?
Correct, that's right, exactly. And this is approximate numbers, because we don't have all of our valuation from 2025 set, because people have until April 1 to apply for exemptions, April 1 for value changes, and we also don't know what our certified ratio is gonna be. We're gonna be shooting for 100, but I don't know those things right now. I've had discussions, but I don't have an answer for you.
So no matter what, we're looking at a potential of a 2 mil increase or 2 mil.
And that's on the city side.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about anything else.
Not factoring in county or school.
I'm talking about the things you can, you know, that you have some control of.
That's what we have some control of as the council. I don't want to discuss anything else other than that until we go step the mill rate. I know it's been discussed a lot about the school. Voters can vote, choose what they want to do. It's gonna hand it to us like the county, they're gonna hand us the bill.
And you have to pay it.
We have to.
And, you know, last year, the council had asked if there was any way to modify that and was told no, the tribe has spoken. So we know that even if things really go off the rails, the school is not gonna cut anything. So it's...
We don't have control of that.
No, that's what I'm saying. No, you don't. That's what I'm saying. Like, you've got seven votes, you know, between you. That's it.
Yep.
And we don't, we don't, okay, yeah, thank you.
I mean, I wish I had better news for you, but I don't have any, you know.
Well, I think if anybody on the council has suggestions over the next few days, if we could just get those to Manager Thompson, that would be really helpful.
We are gonna have a department head meeting on Wednesday, so it'd be really good if you could get them to me tomorrow. You know, there's some things that we can't control the costs of, because they're, you know, we have union contracts, we have, you know, it takes fuel to heat these buildings, electricity. We will be seeing some savings in 2025 with our electricity, because our power purchase agreement with Nordic Sun Power finally kicked in this month. So we should be starting to see some savings with that. But there's a lot of our line items that we don't have a lot of control over, unless you want to start talking about cutting services, cutting positions, and really implementing some austerity measures on the local level to cut spending. Like, that's where we are. You know, you can raise the mill rate, or we can cut spending. Like, it's an either-or at this point. Like, this is what you're gonna have for revenue. We're not projecting anymore, and believe me, when we get any kind of new report, we've been checking on it to make sure that we are building in the right numbers here that we can feel comfortable with for excise, for revenue sharing, for other monies that come in.
Any updates on Tyler versus Hennepin?
So as the council knows, I emailed, I sent an email today, because the Maine Legislature is actually having a hearing on a proposed amendment to that, I mean, a proposed legislation, LD 745, that's gonna be on the 12th, and I did write testimony in support of that. Because, you know, the city does have properties around that it would be great to put those back on the tax rolls without our staff, who is already busy enough, you know, having to be real estate agents and property managers for all of these properties that have been held past the six years, where someone could come back and say that what we did wasn't proper. They're not talking about the new stuff. This LD 745 is the stuff that we've held for a long time. In my letter, I used a couple of examples that the city foreclosed on in 2016, one industrial, one that was residential, and we tore things down, just to make the point that if LD 745 were to pass, that the city could liquidate some of that.
Do you have any idea on what the amount owed as far as tax, for tax purposes, on the properties we own? Because we would be able to recoup those, should we be able to sell those.
Yes.
Do you have any idea?
I don't have that. If it's something the council wants me to look up, I can...
I mean, if it's a lot of work, I don't know that. I mean, it might not even be necessary until it changes.
It may not be that hard until the legislation goes through.
But I mean, it would definitely offset, and so if it's a considerable amount of money, I mean, it would be worth noting.
This is unfortunate, because we can't bank on it, because we don't know if they'll sell, correct?
Right, and we don't know if it'll sell.
That's why I don't want to make you go on a wild goose chase for something that we don't know yet, but if it's easy enough and it's not a hard thing, I'm curious as to that dollar amount, whether it's this much or this much.
Because even with LD 745, any proceeds, we would still have to return to the former owner, and that's not really the issue with the city. The city's issue is our staff is already overburdened. And so to say to our finance department, who's already doing payroll, accounts payable, receivable, all the finances for the city, getting things ready for the audit, doing all of our HR tasks, you know, answering the phone, greeting people when they're coming in, to say, oh, and by the way, we also need you to take all these properties, and we're gonna list them for sale, and people are gonna be coming in, and they're gonna have these questions, and then after all of that is done, we're gonna give all that money back to someone who didn't pay their taxes. You know, so it's actually another town manager that's bringing LD 745 forward, because in their town, it's the same thing. Like, they have these properties that they foreclosed on many years ago, they're past that period of time where someone can say that the things weren't done properly, and they want to get them off their, what the city's holding, and get them back on the tax rolls, so they can start taxing them, and hopefully, you know, adding value to them. I mean, what would be great is some of these properties, I mean, not only are we now not collecting the back taxes or current taxes, but wouldn't it be nice if some of these, someone restored or built something new?
Absolutely.
And then we had an increase in the taxes.
Absolutely. I think that there's so many good things about that, so I really hope for good news.
Yes.
Talking about the legislation, couldn't we just hire a Realtor? Isn't that what the law says?
The law says you have to do that, but here's the thing, like, you can hire a real estate agent to do this, but they're still gonna come here and ask all the questions. And then, and if they call the real estate agent, the real estate agent's gonna call here. I mean, Tamara sold real estate, I've sold real estate. It's a, you know, you're always going back and asking the seller the questions that a potential buyer, because you're not taking on that responsibility for answering, like, does it have a septic tank? When was the furnace? Do you have an age of the furnace? And even if you put these all on property disclosures, people still have questions all the time, and they have them about things, you know, we don't even know what they might ask, because we would already look those up if we knew what they were gonna ask and have those, you know, ready, but... And the other problem that municipalities are having is real estate agents don't want to take this stuff, because it's low value, and it's, what you get is a lot of tire kickers that come in, and they tie up all your time, and then, you know, they'll see, okay, the broker price opinion said this property is worth $20,000, just to say, and so they listed at $20,000. Well, someone who can afford $20,000 really wants to get something that's worth $60,000, so they're gonna go into this $20,000 house and say, well, city, I'd pay $20,000 if it had a working furnace, you know, if the taxes were paid, if I had a, you know, the front door actually closed, because these properties, a lot of them are in really poor condition, and they don't have basic things like windows that will go down and doors that will close, and not even thinking about having, you know, pipes that aren't busted, or a furnace that works, or piping from a fuel tank that will actually go to a furnace when you have it. Some of these places have been vacant since, well, like, the ones I talked about was 2016, you know, so.
So then they're looking at purchasing something for $20,000 and then potentially having to demo it for another $20,000.
Yeah, or they decide, okay, well, I'm gonna put $2.75 into this by sticking some numbers on it, and I'm gonna put a tenant in there that can afford a $20,000, I mean, 20, yeah, $20,000 property, and we've got the police department and the fire department over there all the time, because, you know, the people that can afford that low rent that they're asking are known to our agencies and require a lot of care. So then, we get code enforcement involved, and the fire, and the police, and now we have just tied up all of their time also.
So basically, let's stay tuned to see how this legislation moves forward.
Yeah, you know, or, you know...
If I wasn't sitting on the council, I wouldn't pay my taxes.
Yeah.
Because you just gotta waive foreclosure, which is stupid, in my opinion.
Yeah, it's okay, speak your mind.
I just, I disagree with that.
I disagree also.
And then if I don't pay my taxes, you're not gonna sell my house, and if you do, you're gonna do all the light work anyway.
That's right.
I understand, I understand the situation.
And if you do it in eight years, it's gonna be inflated greatly, and I've done nothing and got a lot more money.
You're gonna give me back whatever, or the city's gonna give me back whatever, whatever's left over, and I understand the frustration of this, and it frustrates me a lot in this situation. It drives our hands.
It does, I understand.
And we're gonna end up getting this backlog again of blighted property or any properties. And if we don't be somewhat proactive...
And you said March 12?
March 12 is the hearing for LD 745.
LD...
Two days from now.
745, so they will, the testimony begins at 10:00 a.m., and you can watch it online.
And this is one of my things, I think I stated when I was running again for council, is we need to, how we're gonna deal with this tax related property. And we don't have, we don't have any more, I believe we have any more than we had a bunch of years ago. It's just...
We don't have people taking advantage of what you're saying, that you would do a few more non-council.
And I probably still would, I probably still would pay the taxes.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying.
You're making a point.
Yeah, no, I get what you mean, though, and we...
Why would you, what's your incentive to pay your taxes?
Agreed.
If you're not gonna, if I know you're gonna waive my foreclosure every year, so, and I agree with, 100% agree with the policy we have, the council, except they have their taxes paid, big supporter of that, so just throwing that out there.
All right, anything further on the budget?
But stay tuned, maybe there'll be some new updates for Tyler versus Hennepin County by the time all this comes around in the fall.
Before I die. Okay, item number 12 on the agenda is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. Councilor Bagley, did you have anything this evening?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilor Lovewell?
No, just congratulations to all the winners in town. We're real proud of everyone and excited for our town, too, and our community.
Absolutely. Deputy Mayor Smith?
Absolutely, just, I spoke enough earlier about that, but we had some great things in here, so despite our budget, it's great. And next week, we're gonna have the boys team in here, two gold balls, principal of the year, teacher of the year, I believe.
Principal of the year in the wrestling room.
Oh, she, it was, yeah, she got an award, actually.
She got an award, or there's all kinds of good stuff going on, so.
Yeah, for sure.
That's great, and it was great to see the chamber full here, and...
They gotta get back to practice.
And Gary.
They probably have some spring sport.
Congratulations, Gary, because we should have said congratulations to Gary again.
Yes, absolutely.
You deserve that a lot. You really do.
A lot of good stuff going on.
Yeah, big award.
And that's what I have, thank you.
Councilor Terryo?
Give him a helicopter.
Councilor Kelly?
I have nothing to say. I'm good.
No, they stole all the good stuff.
They did.
Yeah, they did.
All right, well, our next regular meetings will be March 17th and April 28th. We do have executive sessions on the agenda.
But let's do the second one first, because I don't see the people here for the first one, for real estates.
Okay. What are the wishes of the council?
Motion to go to executive session, economic development pursuant to one MRS...
No, the second one.
Oh, the second, excuse me, reunion negotiations pursuant to MRS A 405.60 regarding the fire department.
My second. Motion second, discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So I thank you all for joining us this evening. That concludes the open session of our meeting.